Well, welcome everyone. It's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Here.
David Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Call.
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinitz?
Welcome everyone. I'm glad you can join us for a few minutes tonight. First off, approval of the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In front of you, you have the minutes of the July 29 briefing meeting, the August 2 regular meeting, and then the August 9 special meeting pertaining to budget. We need to approve those. We have a motion and a second to approve those three minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In front of you, you have the claims. If there are questions on any of those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar. Brian, you want to?
We've got a number. We have a number of plats. And the Bluffs addition, quite a bit of property to be platted. Tallgrass addition, a lot. Brandon industrial park, and then the original town of Brandon, and then two outside of the city limits.
Anything in there? Anyone have any questions, counsel? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, the meeting is open to any visitor that would like to make a public comment. We ask that you do keep those to five minutes. So if there's anyone that wants to address the council at this point, the mic is open.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
I'm Tom Willstein, 201 South Augusta Avenue. I also own Brandon Pharmacy at 116 East Holly Boulevard. And I'm here to discuss the sidewalk problem on Hackberry Street. Just kidding. I'm here for the only reason I ever come here. Medical.
You had me going.
So, I had, I hadn't, it just had come to my attention, and I don't know if this is just a rule change, or I just have never seen this before, but the, one of the things they were talking about for having dispensaries or any business is in a freestanding building. So, can't be in any sort of strip malls, what seems that the state is saying. And they're having an open hearing on Wednesday, and Pierre to talk about it, but my other pharmacist, her son is going to college, so I'm not able to go to there. So, I wrote a letter, and even though you guys aren't involved in that particular part of it, I'm just gonna kind of read you my thoughts on what I'm sending to the Department of Health. So I introduce myself. The proposed rule is a medical cannabis establishment must be completely freestanding and must have separate means of ingress and egress from any other establishment business, et cetera, et cetera. So, I said although I believe the intention of this rule is for safety reasons, I feel the reality, we will have detrimental effects, especially for smaller towns. My reasoning is as follows. One, the rule is unnecessary. My pharmacy is in a retail center, and there is nothing unsafe about it. In fact, having neighbors with redundant security measures is helpful for all parties. Earlier this year, someone broke my front window of the pharmacy, and I did not catch them on any of the cameras, the angles that we had in my cameras. Luckily, my coffee shop neighbor had a perfect picture of their vehicle. So if I was in a freestanding building, I never would have had that. So it's good to have neighbors for those reasons. Additionally, being in a center business of a retail center would make the dispensary much more secure for any potential burglary, because you only have to worry about the front and the back. The sides are already, there's no windows there because of the neighbors. Number two, the rule may cause more dangerous locations to be chosen. Because of the cost of constructing a freestanding building, a potential dispensary owner may need to decrease the financial burden by choosing an alternate location away from more popular areas. This means less traffic, less streetlights, and less police patrolling. This could dramatically increase potential for burglary or robbery. Number three, this rule will price prospective local entrepreneurs out of the market. The cost between renting a space in a retail center and constructing a new building on a freshly purchased land is an order of magnitude difference. The only people able to afford such action are the ultra wealthy and most likely out-of-state interests. Those people will not live in the town, they will not support local charities, their kids will not attend school here, their only interest in town will be to make money off of the citizens. I would much rather see a local family that supports the community be successful than a national conglomerate add another location to a map at a corporate office. So that's what I'm going to send to them. And then, and then, just a related, unrelated thing. The, I was talking to actually the guy who was here last time. He represents some people who are interested in starting a cultivation facility, kind of what we were discussing last time. That would be a potential to be in the industrial park. And I kind of got the vibe that that might not be the worst idea. So, he, I was asking him about this, and then he was telling me about all the other kind of hoops that they're coming, having to go through, the restrictions that Sioux Falls is doing, and all the surrounding communities. And he said, there's, there's going to be an opportunity out there for a community who wants, who wants it. And so hopefully I didn't step on any toes here, but I said, what, so Brandon has the industrial park. It's right off the interstate. It's right next to Sioux Falls. What would, what would you like to see from Brandon that would make your people look at, at that location? And he basically said not to have incredibly restrictive rules, and the $100,000 fee that they're, they're requiring, I think it's a yearly fee, is extravagant for, for what they have going on right now. So, as you're discussing this, there's a potential that you kind of have to determine, would we rather have a good business with lots of employees, or you know, the huge fee that goes to the city? I asked him like, what would be, because you can't really get taxes from those type of things, what would be the incentive for me to tell my city council? And he said, so I don't know that, if this is big or not, but he said, it would be, they would be looking for roughly a 50,000 square foot building with, with a potential for 100,000 square feet. It would employ several high-end, it'd be like SDSU graduates. It's that kind of level of cultivation. And there would be several high-paying jobs that would be involved with that. Of course, you know, they don't necessarily live in Brandon. We all know that, you know, but it would be a potential of having a, another industry with lots of jobs, with good paying jobs here. So, anyway, I was just kind of talking to him, and I was just going to run that by as, you know, there's, this is an actual thing. It's a potential, because it sounds like the next closest people they have right now are two hours away. And they don't, they want to be by Sioux Falls. They don't want to be, they don't want to be two hours away. So, anyway, that's what I have for you today. And then, if you have any questions for me, whatever. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hey, Tom, I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
What size facility would these people look at?
Uh, so, they said if it's medical only, it would be only, they'd only need 20,000 square feet. But they said if recreational, they'd need to expand to 50,000 with potential of 100,000. So, I don't know what that compares to like Marmen, if that's bigger or smaller or same or what, but it sounds big to me.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Tom. You made some good points there.
I appreciate it. As an SDSU grad, talking about the high level of SDSU grads, first of all. Yeah, I guess. Anyway, I, you know, I think this whole business of, you know, one of the things that, that, at the marijuana meetings that I went to, they were preaching for was uniformity of rules, so to speak. And I sort of feel like that's gone a little bit off the rails, and I think we're looking at doing what we believe is fair and equitable for the city of Brandon. And so that's, in my opinion, what we need to look at, not necessarily whatever. I think the uniformity is sort of gone, is what I'm saying. So, appreciate your comments, Tom. Is there anyone else that has a comment they'd like to make? If not, we'll, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we will move on to the first, next action item is a one-day alcohol license for the Double D Saloon on September 11.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the one-day alcohol license for the Double D Saloon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the second reading of ordinance number 634, establishing a storm water utility fee.
AE2S will be here at the next meeting to review the thoughts behind setting the fees with a presentation as to how those are arrived at.
So this was, did we get any other bits besides AE2S almost, or no?
No. And this, this ordinance just establishes the fee. It doesn't set it. That'll be set by resolution after, after AE2S's presentation.
A motion and a second to, on the second reading of ordinance 634, establishing a storm water utility fee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Golf course, golf course retaining wall design proposal is there?
We've got a proposal to redesign that retained wall at the golf course for $70,000. That includes up to the bidding, or including, or drafting the bid documents through the bidding process. And as always, there'd be a separate contract for CA. The proposal is submitted by ASG.
And Brian, this, this would stabilize the wall?
It would stabilize that bank. North of the clubhouse, we'd be looking at bidding late this year, early next year. I hate to say late this year, because who knows, but sometime early next year for construction next season.
Again, same question. Would put this out to any other engineering firms?
Not that I'm aware of.
So me, Brian, just for design seems not the highest level, I would say. I would like to see another engineering, at least one more of the proposal.
You know, we've kicked this can down the road numerous times. I'd like to just push forward and get it, get it done. We have fund balance to pay for it. I'm not.
Is this, this is more?
Costs did seem reasonable to Tammy.
It's more than just the, this is for the actual construction also, Kurt, not, or no?
No, this is just the design of the retained wall.
Just the redesign.
Survey work, content plan, final design, and bidding.
Okay.
And they have structural and civil engineering.
Okay.
Oh, just, it seems like a lot to me. Plus, we're going to have a construction admin contract on top of it, or who knows, 50 plus another 25 when we get halfway done.
What was the total amount budgeted for the entire project, like 750?
750 is what we're estimating.
Is that what they're estimating? I was going to just ask.
I know it's a lot, and I don't like it either, but I think we need to get moving on it. So I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the golf course retaining wall design proposal of 70,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec. Anything there, Brian, of note?
Nope, other than we're losing most of our summer help by the end of this week at least. So, that leads us into the next, the next item.
Right. We do have a, to approve a volunteer. I believe that's Howard. We have a motion and a second to approve the volunteer. I believe he will be doing the water, flower, flower watering along Holly. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, we do.
Yes.
There you go. We have a wage adjustment for Corey Carlson in the Parks Department.
I make a motion to approve here, second.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Corey Carlson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stifel, anything with the police report that we should chat through, or? There in front of you. Inspections, ambulance report, and item number four is a wage adjustment for Chief Stifel.
Or just a motion to deny would be appropriate as well. Sure.
We're lucky, we're lucky, lucky to have them. Man, they all want to second that, Jamie.
Once you, once you mention taser, boys.
We have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Chief Stifel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, the draft medical cannabis regulations. We got this done, Lisa?
I would like to say it's done, but I don't know what you guys want to do. I've given you some ideas. I've gotten a little bit of feedback. There was a comment earlier that Sioux Falls wants $100,000 a year. Their draft came out on Thursday. It's $100,000 for two years. So, a lot of different things to think through. What I really want to do is get a first reading that's very, that doesn't have a lot of changes, so we can get it published and get a second reading going, kind of giving you a timeline of what that would look like. Some of the things to think about are the, and I'm not worried about the application fees, because we would set those by resolution, but the licensing fees, the renewal fees, I, there's been some discussion about sending it at a dollar a person, which would mean about $10,000 a year for a license. And that would be for, it's whatever you want. You guys have been talking about doing the manufacturing, cultivation, testing, and dispensaries. So, I think what is common is to have a license for every single one, and a licensing fee for everyone, a renewal fee for everyone, an application fee for everyone. Sioux Falls is doing just the, right now, in their distribution that they sent out on Thursday, they're only allowing for, in their ordinances, a dispensary and a testing, not doing the cultivation and manufacturing, if you want all four. That, I just need to know what you want. I am drafting to have all four in town. Putting in zoning that the dispensaries and testing would be allowed in the central and general business so long as we are the distance from the schools, the thousand feet from the schools. There are some spots that Brian found for where those could go. I'm proposing that you guys look at the distance from the property line to property line. I think that's, we, we get to define how we want to define it. I think at minimum, the intent behind the school is the school property. So, I think building to building is the least restrictive. If the idea is to keep this away from kids under the age of 21, then I think what you want to do is, the most expansive distance would be property line to property line, not building to building. Or alternatively, you know, building to the school property line. If what we're trying to do is keep it away from kids on the school playground, I think you would want to take into account property line, not the building inside. Though I haven't really heard how you want to define the distance, but I think we need to define the distance, so that when we're doing our zoning regulations, we have a good idea of what it is that the council wants from the distances. So I'd like to hear some comments on that, if you have that. In terms of the manufacturing cultivation, what I have been kind of hearing is to maybe put it into the heavy and light industrial areas. And I think setting that, I haven't looked at it for a while, and I've changed it a couple different times, but 300 feet between all the buildings and that we would do just away from the schools as well. Yeah. But 300 feet between each establishment is something that I think is also out there in terms of, you don't want to have a manufacturing, adjacent to a manufacturing, adjacent, and the walls all, so you don't have 15 buildings that are all next to each other. We have some separation. And so, consider to do something between each cannibal, cannabis establishment, excuse me. And again, how you want to define what that is, from property line to property line, or building to building. Those are some of the zoning things that I need some feedback on. Doing this through, you can get your, you submit your license, but you still have to go through the conditional use permit. It's a permissible use within the zoning or area, but still go before and have a public hearing before you actually get the ability to operate, so that you do have some public input. That's something that most entities are doing, is to say this is where we're going to allow them in the zoning area, but you still have to get the conditional use. I think that's pretty consistent with what other cities are doing with respect to that. Really trying to work through the idea of, I should say, most cities are also limiting the number of dispensaries. So you don't have the potential for, you know, 50 dispensaries or 100 dispensaries to set some number that you think is reasonable. Sioux Falls set it at five. A lot of the, like, ESD schools, cities is kind of what I consider them to be. You know, setting it at two, the Piers are looking at the Piers and the Watertowns and the Mitchells, setting it at about two-ish dispensaries. They're still working through some of those things as well. So do we want to have some limitation on the dispensaries? Do you want to have some limitation on the cultivation, manufacturing? Or do you want to have the potential for, you know, 50 different people to try and put something out there? I don't know. I haven't heard anything about limitations of, of those. Most places, most cities are not having the, anything other than dispensary, and we certainly can. But do you want to have some limits on the number of manufacturing cultivation? I don't know. I haven't heard anything about limits from anybody, but that's something I, I'm interested, I need to draft if that's what you want, because I don't have any limitations set in what I've been working on. I'm trying to think of other big things. The other big thing then would be, okay, you get all the applications in. Are we going to end up with 100 applications to work through, or is it just going to be one? And if it's just one, it makes it a lot easier. But if there's 100 applications, we have to have staff review all those applications. Sioux Falls and some other entities have set up kind of this lottery system where we will look at them, get your licensing, your application and licensing fees. So when you turn in your application, you have to pay the license fee. That way, you don't go later and go, oh, well, they didn't pay their license fee, and try and get the money from them. So when the application comes in, it has to be complete with the licensing fee. We put them all in kind of a sealed thing, and then we draw out, and here's the order. We have 80. I don't know what we're going to get. We have eight, we have 80, we have one. We will put them in some type of system and number them and take a look at them. And then, the way this works is we have to, you know, we send it up to Pierre, and the department is going to go in and issue a registration. If there's only two dispensaries allowed, they're not going to allow, they're not going to get a registration for more than what we have set our numbers at. They've got to get a registration. And then, there's a lot of different things that have to be done relative to cameras and entryways and things that are set by statute. And what I'm anticipating in our ordinances is going to be, okay, then you're going to need to get a certificate of occupancy. And we will have the police chief, and we will have the city inspector go in and make sure if the cameras are supposed to be this, and if this is what it's supposed to be by statute, by ordinance, that we go in and we make sure everything is done according to what the standards are, and then you get the certificate of occupancy like other businesses get, that has to be displayed. So there's a whole bunch of different things we, we can do in terms of the process. I have looked through and tried to work through what I think makes sense with our zoning and our ordinances. I've looked through probably 15 different cities and counties and kind of tried to work through the process and some of the big things. So those are kind of the big issues that I just kind of need to know where council's at, because when we do have this for our first ordinance, like I said, I'd really like to have it be pretty solid of what you guys want.
Lisa, do you have a list of what you would consider to be those major issues that, I mean, how many do we want? Where do we, you know, we sort of have an idea where we allow it. I mean, we just sort of need to go through all those and check them off. And I agree. I mean, I think it's the fees and all of those things, but you hit on so many different items. I don't know if I could.
So, I don't have a list.
Lisa, let me, let me see if I can help you out quickly. And I just, I just made some real quick notes. So we need to have, we need to determine our location distances from a school and our, and our other businesses. What was the, what's the 300?
Right, right. So, how are you going to measure?
Right.
So, is this in property line, property line, building, building, you know, whatever the case, if you want to measure. Another measuring or distance type thing would be from, from building to building. So, are you going to require some separation between these establishments? Certainly fine to have all four in one business, but then are you going to do, and I don't know. I don't know if you want to have spacing between, let's say you have ABC, and they have all four. Well, if next to it, we're going to have XYZ company, is there going to be spacing between this manufacturing and this manufacturing? Or are we going to allow them to be right next to each other? Do you want some spacing? That's the other spacing issue.
So that'd be the 300-foot distance?
Right, and that's.
Or some other distance?
Right. Yep.
Okay. And you mentioned the different fees. There's a, there's an application fee, right?
Right. So I was looking at types of fees, and you have to remember, this is not a revenue generating proposition. I mean, we, we set these things, unless you want to do the $100,000. And you can set it what you think is reasonable, that it's going to cost to, to be working on these things. So, an initial application fee, a renewal application fee, because every time they get renewed, we're still going to have to have staff come in and look at that. And, you know, what, what's reasonable, we certainly can have, and other entities are doing, an initial and a renewal application fee. My thought is that would be set by resolution. The third fee would be the initial license fee. And then the fourth one would be a renewal license fee. And those, the, the application fees can be the same. The licensing fees can be the same, but we need to set what. but we need to set what those are going to be.
Yeah, so basically it's an app fee and a license fee, and then the two subsequent renewals. Okay. I don't know if this applies or not, but my experience, it's best just to combine the app and the license fee into one.
Well, I think the challenge becomes here, if they don't get the certificate of registration, you're going to want to give back the license fee, because you can't keep it, because they're not going to license. So I wouldn't, I think that's why so many people are going to have a application fee and a licensing fee separate. Because the application fee, and I'll tell you, Sioux Falls right now is spending a bunch of time trying to figure out what that application fee should be based upon how much work it's going to be to review the applications, and that's really what that's designed for. The licensing fee is designed for an ongoing one-year period of time, or two years, Sioux Falls is doing two years. So that's, I think, why is the entities might not get the registration from the Department of Health, or, because we're not going to do a criminal background check on these people, but they might, and it might get rejected for that reason. And then we have the license fee that we're trying to keep, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a business in to use that license, so we'd be wanting to give that back, and that's why they would be a separate fee.
As I said in the initial, I said, in my experience, this is a totally different industry. Okay, so I agree here that we do an half fee, at least it covers our expenses here for reviewing the license and sending it in. And then subsequently, they have to get approval from the state. Once they get approval, then we can issue a license, is that right? Yeah. Okay. I like that path myself.
This, you know, Lisa, I'm really conflicted by what I'm hearing on Sioux Falls' $100,000. I mean, the voters passed this, so obviously we're following the rules. We're not making the rules here. So I think, to me, it would almost be that they don't want to have anything, and they want to shut it off based upon cost. I don't think that's what we're here to do either, is it? I don't think we want to do that.
I'm, I'm really comfortable with the dollar per person fee, Mayor. I would like to see the spacing be 1,000 feet from the building, because the way our schools are set up, it's going to limit where those dispensaries can be, and we've, as Tom mentioned, we want to have them in places where there is traffic, not hidden in some alley. And so I would be in favor of going from building to building rather than property line.
And I did, and get me from the school buildings versus property lines, and I think he thought it was more about 30 feet to, I mean, he drew this, and I, so-
Yeah, there's, there's a new map laying there, and that's 1,000 feet from the property lines from the schools. The one that's in the packet is 1,000 feet from the building. So just as a reference, from the high school, 1,000 feet from the building gets to the west side of the Alliance Building. 1,000 feet from the property line takes it over to the east side of the post office. And then, you know, going north, it goes from about the middle of Sunshine to the Catholic Church parking lot, roughly. And then on, the only other place, where, I mean, north of there is fine, the only other place it would impact would be West on Holly. If it's 1,000 feet from Brandon Elementary, it would be about where Brandon Spirits is at. If it's 1,000 feet from the property line of BE, it moves it over to Chiro Sports.
I, I would agree with Barb. I think the buildings is fine. I'm, I'm of the opinion that, you know, looking at Sioux Falls having five of these, I sort of like what you mentioned about the other kind of consistent Watertowns, Mitchells, the two. I mean, I still believe we want to go into this, you know, a little bit slower than, you know, let's have 15. I mean, hey, if they're going to, you know, I mean, the fees all sound great, but we've got to control this too, and we don't know how much control this is going to take, so I would be of the opinion, two might be a good number, so I maintain your thoughts.
Just for clarification, we're, we're just talking about medical at this point, we're not talking about recreational, and recreational comes along, we'll have to go through this whole process, so the fee for recreational isn't laid down here. The fee can be different for recreational than for medical, correct?
Right, so the ordinance is medical cannabis, and we could, if recreational comes down, we can change that completely to cannabis, or we can do a recreational one. So this, we are just talking right now about medical, yes.
I think we're all about what kind of money the city can make, but frankly, the only money the city would make off this is, is your fee, is that correct?
That's what I understand, right.
Possible sales tax, that's still to be determined, or?
Yeah, not for medical.
Is the 1,000-foot being challenged at all at the state level?
It's already set in statute, so that's-
Is the separate building set in statute?
No.
No? Okay. I just don't see us getting a ton, especially when they learn of the expense that's coming with the security in the vault and the separate building. I guess my only thought on, I agree with the building parameter rather than the property line, but my only thought on the number of dispensaries, that makes us a little bit unique to some of these other towns, is we are open, I believe we're open to recruiting some of that manufacturing and testing and some of the industrial type that the others are not, and they may have a dispensary as part of that. So I guess I would propose that we consider three, so that we could still potentially have two local entities venture out, and that would exclude the one that's part of, of that manufacturing. So that would be my only change.
And to add to that, we, we're in a unique position where we're at, located I-90, not that far from 29, kind of at that crossroads.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too three-ish. I'd be-
I think one of the things I haven't heard, and so if somebody is wanting to speak up on this, I haven't heard from anybody that we are wanting to limit it to just dispensaries and testing. I mean, so I, that's one of the things we need to, if you're saying, no, we don't want cultivation manufacturing, I need to know that.
I have some thoughts. One, I would love to see cultivating and manufacturing. We have an industrial park that is set up for it, I think it would be awesome. I liked the 1,000 feet from building to building. I would, I guess I would, I would have a question, which is, do we restrict the number of breweries that would come to town?
Liquor licenses, yeah.
Does that require a liquor license to open a brewery?
Yeah, it's alcohol.
Small beverage license or liquor license?
That whole license.
And if you're making it on-site, does that fall into a different category than if you're just serving it?
I think there's a whole different regulation on breweries, because we don't have one in town. So there's a whole different statute that I'd have to look at, I can answer that question.
If we have a conditional use for off-sale, correct, like liquor? If you're going to open a liquor store, you'd have to get a conditional use for that, right?
For on-sale.
Off-sale.
For liquor, you don't have to cost-
You don't need to get a conditional use for off-sale liquor?
Sure.
Okay. I would like to see the number, Mayor, the number of off-sale liquor licenses that we have, because I guess I don't really see a whole lot of difference. Since this is medical, Tom, I have a question for you. Did you pay a, I'll let you get up here. Did you pay a city license for your pharmacy?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. I guess for license fee, I'd like to see it look at a dollar a person, sort of like we do with our liquor. If that's what our off-sale for liquor is. I would like to see sale and testing in our general business, did you say general business and?
Central.
Central business? Well, this is our central business that we're sitting in, so we're probably not going to get a lot of it there, would be my guess, but-
With the school, it's very limited, I mean, we've got to be on their side of Brandon Lumber, right?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I could, we could just be general business, because really our central business is about a block and a half, two blocks long, and that's probably not going to change, so. What other questions do you have? Have I missed anything?
I think I-
Separate building.
Well, I personally think that if the state of South Dakota is saying that it has to be in a separate building, the state of South Dakota is trying to limit how many of these places can exist.
Did you say that was set in statute already? I thought it wasn't.
I had, I had a-
Is it? Or that's the public comment?
I don't remember any administrative rules, what's, what I recall, as I sit here right now, I'm searching.
Is, the administrative rules is you can't have a, you couldn't have like, a pharmacy have the dispensary in it. But I, I have these right here, and I was trying to find that when Tom was speaking, and I can't find it in the establishments that has to be separate. I'm not saying it's not in there, I just don't see it. So it might have been added.
Tom-
94, 05.
94-
Tom, I have another question for you. Tom, I have another question for you. You're not allowed to sell medical cannabis in your pharmacy?
No, nor, nor would we want to have that burden in the pharmacy, we're already busy enough.
Is there a reason why you can't sell medical cannabis?
Well, just, well, federally, I think there'd probably be an issue with the DEA and things, but most pharmacists, like I said, are busy enough, they don't want to mess around with it. Just to, you know, put in my two cents with this, if they don't change the freestanding building thing, then you're going to get zero. I mean, that's, there's nobody that can afford to do it, so it won't even matter. You guys could say 100, you can say one, it won't matter, there's no one that can afford to do it with, if they have to build their own building.
I think if you look at the recreational rule, I think on the recreational, they have a separate building. You were saying that in order to really make it medical, they have to have the recreational in the same building, so what we're, you know, you could, it's possible that the rules will come out and say, yeah, you can have a medical co-located in a strip mall, you cannot have a recreational co-located in a, am I, am I off on that, or?
Well, I'm not sure if they're already planning for the future for recreational, I mean, maybe, but there's so much more money in that, it would make more sense, but if you're trying to talk medical, it's just, there's not enough money.
Is there a rule that you've seen that says a separate building for, for medical?
Yeah, for medical, yeah, that's-
That's under what?
That, that is the thing I just said, the 4490, 0405, or whatever, that's the-
That's under lighting, 0405, 4490, 0405 is lighting, it's not that bad.
Is it what, Lisa?
Well, I-
Can I see?
I printed out 4490, 0405, and that's the section on lighting, it's not there, so.
See if I can look it up, please. I was talking to the people earlier, and they sent me the link, so let me see if I can find that and see if we're on the same page.
I personally don't, I, like Dana said, this is going to be so expensive, I don't, and Tom said, I don't think we're going to have a lot of people coming in. I, I don't feel the need for that separate building thing, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but I don't know what the big deal about that is.
Again, understanding that-
Yeah, it sounds disturbing.
If recreational comes along, I think the recreational bill, the way it was written, I'd have to look at it again. I believe that they stated a separate building for recreational. You were talking about-
So you think maybe I'm thinking, I was looking at the recreational rules?
Pardon?
I'll, I'll double-check, I don't want to be speaking out of print.
It is possible. I read through it, and it seems to me I saw something in there that says that the recreational, the way it was, in what was voted on, had to be a separate building.
Sure, sure.
So if you're talking about having a totally separate medical, the rules may be different in what, what the voters voted for than, than recreational. So you might look at that, and that might be where it's coming from.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, let me add my two cents to all of this. I think building to building, 1,000-foot, I think that more than, somebody mentioned the playgrounds, that more than covers sufficient distance away from playgrounds as well. The number of dispensaries, you know, that's, that could be a floating number, two, three, five isn't going to work in Brandon anyway, we all know that. But two or three, I'd be probably comfortable with either one, I'd, I'd rather say up to three as opposed to up to two. We can still only issue two. I said my part on the, on the license fees. Standalone buildings, Daryl, as a developer, people are going to look at lease versus own costs, and in some cases, some businesses are going to want to own their space, but a smaller business most likely aren't going to be able to afford to do that, so they will go to a lease route. Am I, am I on the right path here or not? Okay. So I don't think it makes sense to restrict-
It's, it's in the draft rules.
Yeah, we're not going to jack.
That, it says, a medical cannabis establishment must be completely freestanding and must have separate means of ingress and egress from any other establishment, business or residence, except that multiple cannabis establishments with common ownership may be co-located. So that's in the proposed rules that they're having their hearing on.
Right, and that's what Tom's letter is addressing.
Right, and then the question is, do you want to have spacing between one enclosed facility and another enclosed facility? I think we probably have some general zoning codes that have to have so much space between buildings, right?
Yeah, setbacks.
That would take care of it.
No, setbacks from property lines are, are, you know, somewhere between, side yards typically are going to be somewhere between seven and 15 feet. So if you want substantial distance between cannabis establishments, it's in the draft ordinance at 300. So they'd have to be 300 feet in between buildings.
I would say just leave it like we do every other business. I mean, it's up to them if they want to be that competitive and go right next to each other. I mean, we don't stop a liquor store from going in right next to another liquor store, so I don't, I guess I don't-
State rule.
It's a state rule that you-
I think so. Is it a state law?
I don't know, I'd have to look to see if, they have to be so many feet apart. Nobody's ever asked me that question. And I, it wouldn't surprise me that you can't have two next to each other, I can't think of, like, I can't think of two liquor stores next to each other, but-
And they're not going to want to anyway, I guess I just-
But the manufacturing might. I mean, I don't think you're going to want two dispensaries next, but do we want, and that's, the question is, do you want a whole row of manufacturing cultivating? I don't know if you do or not. And I don't know, so, so that's just something to think about. Do you want spacing between those?
Well, quite frankly, if we had three growing facilities there, I don't think it's, and they're all up in the industrial park, I don't think it's going to matter to, to those facilities if they're five feet apart or 300 feet apart. If they can make a run at it and make it successful, I don't think the distance is going to matter. It's like two liquor stores, if they can go next door to each other and make it, they're going to do it.
You know, normally when we consider distances and zoning, it's to limit traffic, it's to limit population, it's to limit, right? These are going to be enclosed facilities, nobody's even going to know what's going on inside of them. So I mean, as far as limiting the distance between them, I don't see how that's, I don't see that being necessary.
Yeah.
Do you want limits on the number of manufacturing, cultivation, testing? Do you want to just leave those open so you, or do you want to set up to 10? Because we can always add more. I mean, do you, I don't know what's going to happen, but-
Do you want to set, you can always go back later?
I don't-
You're not going to be able to go back later.
But caps on it when all of a sudden you have, you know, 70 of these, for example, but you could get 70 and go, oh, well, we want to increase some. So if you want caps on the manufacturing, cultivation, and testing, then tell me that so we can write it in there. If you want to say up to three dispensaries and up to 10 each of manufacturing, you know, whatever. I don't, I just need to know.
Do, I don't believe that when it comes to our industrial park, we limit any other manufacturing. Like if another wind tower place wanted to come to town and build right next to Marmon, they could buy land and build wind towers next to Marmon, I believe.
Right, but the, the state is allowing you in this circumstance to limit it, whereas, so it's, if you want to limit it, you have that ability to, as opposed to other times in zoning, you can't.
Personally, I, I still would like to go a little bit slower on this and then, you know, so I, I see Lisa's- Personally, I, I still would like to go a little bit slower on this and then, you know, so I, I see Lisa's point that I think we should have a limit of, you know, if it's ten, I don't think we'd have ten applications for it, but it, at least we could, you know, whoa, this is getting out of hand, you know, we could at least say, stop.
If we issued, we said we'll go up to ten, we can still only say one.
Right. You, you don't have to issue the license, but I don't know why you wouldn't if you're saying you'd go up to ten.
Right.
I don't know. I, I, I believe there should be an up to three and up to ten, or whatever it might be.
So what's, what's the opposite effect? You said it's not good to come back and cap it. I mean, so if we didn't set a limit and there was all this activity and we felt it was overwhelming, why is that not, what's the con to that?
If you don't have a cap on it, I don't know how you're going to be able to say, oh, well, we only wanted ten of them, so we're not going to issue twelve. Because you, you've already haven't regulated out, so how are you going to be able to say, oh, we didn't mean we wanted twenty of these, we, we only wanted ten? So the, i- if you're wanting to have some slower process or let's see what happens, then I would suggest you put caps on it right now. Because we can always go, as I drafted, to add more. But once you have those applications in, I don't know how you're going to deny twenty of them if they all meet our application requirements and they all pay the application and the initial licensing fee. And they all have all of the security requirements. I don't know how you're going to be able to go, oh, well, we didn't mean twenty.
Lisa, if you manufacture and cultivate, you also have to test?
No.
Is it all three and, is testing?
Testing is a separate.
Separate.
You, you don't even have to process if you manufacture or if you call, uh, grow. Those are two separate businesses as well.
Okay.
So there's a growing operation, there's a processing operation, there's a testing operation, and there's a selling operation. And somewhere in there, you have to transport the materials from place to place.
One of those living, you know, growing, processing.
They grow it and process it typically in the same business?
Not necessarily.
Not, not necessarily.
No. They, they'll grow it and harvest it. It's sort of like if you grow corn and harvest it, you take it to an elevator. Now, the elevator might sell it to a mill that processes it into corn starch or whatever, right? It's just this, you grow it and then you sell it to somebody who processes it.
What are we talking about here? You want an up to ten cultivation?
So if you, if you want to put something out there.
I would say up to whatever the number is of manufacturing, up to the number of cultivation, up to the number of, of testing, up to the number of dispensaries.
Sure. Okay.
You know, one of the, one of the things that I think we need to do a little bit of research before we get too far ahead of us on production is water usage of these plants. You have a hundred thousand square foot plant and, uh, I, I know from some experience of taking, taking a couple of grow operations off, they use a tremendous amount of water. And these are, uh, these, these were not this sophisticated. And so, you know, we're building another water treatment plant right now. And they use massive amounts of water, I believe. I don't know if they recycle it or if it just goes into the, uh, the sewer stream or, or what, but, you know, and you talk about ten, ten manufacturing, that's just not going to happen. We don't have the infrastructure to support that, so.
That's a good point. I, I think that's well, well stated.
If, if they were willing to treat their own water, could they dig their own well in the industrial park?
We don't, we don't have anything that prohibits, we don't have anything, what I'm aware of, that prohibits a well. We do septic systems. You can't have a septic system in town.
And we would review those applications for how much sewer they would produce because we'd have to go to Sioux Falls, right?
Correct. They would have to fill out a, an industrial user application with the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay. Do we do that with water too or just with sewer?
Just sewer.
Okay.
Well, we'd probably want to look at doing something like that with water, especially if it's a high demand. That's one of the things when, when you go out and recruit a business or a business comes to town, you always look at their utility usage to make sure that your existing infrastructure can handle it.
Right.
So I, we could certainly take a look at, since we're looking at these as conditional uses, that would be one of the conditions that could be placed on a thorough review of their utility usage and, um, amount of stress it puts on the system.
Um, and in dealing with a lot of these industrial users, they'll ask the city if they have enough resources for them before they even commit to coming to town. They will not move to town and then suck up all the resources full while knowing that the, they'll, they've already asked that question of the people who are there buying the land from.
Sure.
Um, and as far as that concerned, I guess if we wanted to put a number on it, man, we don't have enough industrial land to support twenty grow operations. We would have to have somebody go out and buy a lot of land and develop it before, I mean, so you could set the number at ten and I think you'd be lucky to get one or two because I think they're very expensive.
Does anyone have any idea how, how large of a square foot building they would need for anything like this?
Well, he said fifty thousand square feet earlier.
Up to a hundred.
Oh, yeah, fifty up to a hundred.
I'm okay with putting a cap, cap on it, up to. I don't know what that number is, but are you comfortable with three and ten?
Three and ten.
Three and ten?
Three dispensaries.
I'm, I'm more at two. I, I would say, uh, one for every five thousand. That way, if, as the city grows, we could add to them, kind of like what happens with. But I'm only one vote, so.
So in, in your, your case, that would be, if you said one for five thousand, it would actually be three?
No, two.
No, it would be two.
Until we hit fifteen thousand, it would be two. But that's, that's me.
How the wording was, because you could go, one per five thousand.
Yeah, one.
Two at ten, and then over ten would be the third.
No. I, I would go at fifteen, we would add one, but that's me.
So what do we need to act on?
You don't need to act on anything right now.
No, we're just trying to give Lisa some direction.
Right. I'm just trying to get your collective input because we, we really haven't had a discussion of what types of things. And so what, what I'm hearing is building to building, um, no limitation between distances of the establishment, um, application for the license fees. You talked about a dollar per person. Setting a cap on manufacturing cultivation, testing up to ten unless somebody wants to lower it, because I haven't heard that, but I'm going to put ten. Two or three, uh, I'll, I think I'm going to put three in there, um, and, and then we can lower it to, to two if.
Well, up to three. That would mean, that would mean we have to go to three.
Yeah, I mean, right, so long as they, but I think if they get the conditional use permit and, and meet all those. If they're going to meet the requirements, we're going to have to issue it. So I don't want anybody to think, well, we really wanted two, but now we have to give three. But I mean, if they meet it, we've got to give it to them, so. Um, and then a, a dollar per person, I think we already talked about. Those are the big ones and I'm just looking through real quick to see if there's anything else. So I can have a, put out there for the public, put out there for you to, um, to then kind of work through, is there going to be any changes that we're going to do before our first reading? Um, and I kind of would like to do that first reading next Monday. You guys have a, um, a.
Budget work session.
Budget work session. And so I, I'd kind of like to get this out there so that in case we do have a lot of changes between the first and second, we have time to publish it because we've got to get it published and done before the rules hearing comes out.
When will the states be done?
The October fifth or fourth, one of those dates, is when we think the state is going to put out their administrative roles. So we have to work backwards from that. And then the biggest thing really is the publication for the newspapers. So if you have a lot of changes between first reading and second reading, then we.
So we publish it after second reading and then we have to change it again when the state comes out with their rules?
No, I'm working, it, I.
Hopefully not.
I, I haven't heard that there's going to be any changes to the state rules. I mean, yes, there's a rule hearing, but I haven't heard that there's really anything significant out there.
Taking public input, Tim.
Yeah. Well, what we're looking, what we're aiming for is a second reading and adoption on the September seventh meeting. And then I may take a chance and put it in the, uh, paper for publication on the eighth. So I'd assume that there wouldn't be any changes and then that, it would go into effect September twenty ninth, which, which is prior to the state's rules going into effect.
I, I guess one question I would have is I know that this was, um, looked at by staff, so chief and Paul, Brian, Christina. Is something there that we're missing that you would like to draw to our attention? Because you've probably studied it more than we have.
We've given our comments to Lisa. I don't think there was anything.
No, just, uh, nothing too crazy, just a, a couple of comments. Um, the issuance of the license, what we've got in here does not convey a property right to the license holder. So if their license expires or they don't renew it or we revoke it, it reverts back to the city. They don't get to sell it or transfer it to somebody else.
Good. That's, that's good.
You know, otherwise the, the process that Lisa has in place for review by staff and issuance of the final permit is, is decent. You know, you might want to consider there's, there's an appeal board. And here it says the city administrator can suspend a license and then there's an appeal process. Right now, I think on that repea-, or appeal board is the mayor, the city administrator, the police chief and, no.
You know, what I was looking at was the finance officer, the administrator and the mayor. And I, I just kind of came up with an appeal board because I thought we should have one because that then would be appealed to the council. So I wanted somebody on the appeal board to do it. And, you know, it, we could have the chief on it. I just think it's good to have three people on an appeal board. And, uh, we don't have to have the mayor on it, you know. I just kind of threw it out there because, I don't know.
Nobody wants to be on it.
I, I, yeah. So do you want the finance officer on the appeal board? I, you know, we don't know what the issues are going to come. If we're going to suspend a license, what's it going to be on the basis of? Is it going to be because the records aren't what they are? And you want your finance officer? Do you want your city administrator on there? Do you want the police chief on there? Do you want the mayor on there? I think three is better than four.
I think you're fine with the three. I, sooner or later, you got to have a referee and I love referees, you know.
I'm gone on the thirtieth, so that's why I think I was thinking of the twenty-third.
You did mention the, uh, process for the applications, a lottery type system or something like that. Uh, we need to kind of decide what we want to do with that too as well, correct?
Well, I think it's kind of a good process of, because I don't know how many we're going to get. So let's say we do get twenty applications in for a dispensary. And their applications are all complete and what I'm anticipating is they're, they're all in there, we just draw them out. So it's not a race to get it in there. Let's have a period of time where you get your application in.
Submit by such.
Submit by such and such a date, it's sealed. We're going to then put everybody's in there and draw them out for an order. This is one through twenty. Let's now look at number one. Is their application complete? Is everything in there? Did they pay the fee? Did, you know, do they have what we want in the application? Okay, then that one is going to be quote unquote certified up to peer. And peer can then say, yes, I'm going to issue registration. Okay, and our second one. And, and so that way, there's kind of a window of time for them to get it in, as opposed to we're going to take the first one that comes in. Let's allow some people to get an application in. So that's kind of the, the system I'm anticipating working through.
So doesn't city of Sioux Falls do something similar with that with their liquor licenses? Don't they have a waiting list?
They have a waiting list, but they don't have a lottery. They don't lottery.
There's the personal, so you're on the list, you pay your, you pay your list fee and you're on the list until it's your turn.
The next one's open.
And they're looking at doing a lottery system like this as well.
Well, and in Sioux Falls, if you acquire a liquor license, it's basically an asset for your business. So you are allowed to sell it. So they, they actually create a secondary market when they run out of liquor licenses because now if you have one and I want it, you and I can set a price on it. The city is not involved with that.
Right, whereas we're looking at not allowing transfers for these because there's a lot of background that has to be done to get a license on the, not that there doesn't, the liquor licenses too, but, um, I don't know anybody that's looking at allowing these licenses to be transferred.
Well, I think you've got a lot of feedback here and let's go ahead and, and plan on next Monday, then take a look at, at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa.
Good work on that, Lisa. It's, it's a little mind boggling, I, I realize. Okay, moving on to administrative, uh, reports. The Brandon ninety preliminary plan is, is, uh, is here on the Brandon Plaza.
I would move to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the, the, uh, Brandon preliminary plans. All in favor, say aye.
May I have comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should ask a question.
I will, I will say that planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning reviewed this and approved this, um, at our last P and Z meeting. Question, Dave?
I don't know if these people are here. They've been sitting here. I don't know if they want to talk or not. Daryl?
Is there anything you want to say about it, Daryl?
Uh, I don't know. Pretty much everything I noticed going on. If you have any questions, I'll answer those. It's coming along good. Uh, we've engaged the D O G. That's coming along for Sled Rock. And, uh, our elevations are going to turn out better than I thought, so it's not going to look like the hole in the ground that it was.
There was a lot of discussion at the planning and zoning meeting relative to ins and outs and egress. So I think, I think, did you have a question, Larry?
I would just like to compliment them for as many meetings as you folks have been at. And also, um, the next one that we're going to be talking about, I appreciate your always being at the meetings. I know it takes a lot of time, so thank you for doing that.
Okay. So I have, I have a few.
With your mic on, yeah?
I have, yeah. As always. Um, I did have a discussion with Daryl here in the last week or so. And my number one question was how much space is still available? That's not already somewhat earmarked. And I believe you said up to twelve acres?
Probably, yeah.
Give or take?
Yep.
I would like at some point to, um, explore the possibility of the Brandon administration and police station having some potential spot up there that we can start building towards, reserving the land, reserving the space. I'm not sure how you would want to work that in there, but I think it's a perfect opportunity to incorporate what we need here with what's going on up there.
Just thinking off the cuff, one of the issues I would have with that is that we have so much, we have a limited amount of commercial space for generating revenue. And by filling that up with a government building, that takes away from that revenue stream. And that would be probably a concern that I would have.
Well, that was my point of how much space is available. Is there room to do something like that?
The city all knew you mentioned space.
Well, I was thinking the same thing while you were talking. I mean.
Senator Judy will be right behind you.
There you go. I, I just think that hopefully is going to be very valuable land and should generate pretty good income for whoever is there. So I, I don't know. I think.
I'll wait in your bathroom grocery store and my hotel guys telling everybody at his country club that he's coming with a couple hotels. So they're all telling me that he's on his way.
Good. Well, and then there's, you know, adding to the problem, Dave, is there's two, two groups out there that are looking at other facilities. A community center and a wellness center. Is that something that can be incorporated in there? I don't know. Are, are they also a revenue stream? Could be, maybe not so much. But those are a couple of things that I've thought about that if we could somehow incorporate all of that into this unique I ninety plaza, business center, whatever, that it, it may have some merit. But I'm, I'm, I'm with, with everybody on limiting, you know, uh, retail space because that's where we will earn our money. Pay everything back. So there's going to be some sort of a balance if we do something like that.
Any other discussion? And, and we do have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Good work, guys.
Good work, guys. Uh, we have the Encore Park preliminary plan, pages seventy-eight to eighty-nine.
We also look at this.
A motion and a second to approve the Encore Park. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
This was also reviewed at the last planning and zoning ma- meeting, and, um, they passed it.
Again, there was quite a bit of discussion on it, and I think it's a great project. Wish, wish you well. Hopefully it'll all, it'll work, work out.
And I guess I'll have this kind of the same questions there for, for these guys. Uh, there you are. Um, how much space is still available? From what you've got committed or?
Yeah, so we're really focused on, on, uh, the RV's parcel and the family parcel and the retail parcel initially. Is there are, those are the projects that we control that are currently just projects? So beyond that, there is, there is a substantial part of plan.
Yep. What about, uh, on the north side of the tracks? Are there po- potential rail spur, rail business locations along there?
There is, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we, uh, we have worked with, uh, Melissa Easter down that, and, uh, are looking to some, some concept or design, for the smaller portions of, of the, or all the rail.
Sure. Any, any talk with any potential rail business?
Uh, so the RV's parcel that I'm talking about is the one that's up on the east side of that location.
That'd be Lot 10?
That's Lot 10. Uh, and, yeah, that is a, that would be a.
What's the length on that?
Length of the spur.
Well, on the spur or the property, yep.
Um, wait, test it, be there. Um, the, the property north of seven is, is, uh, uh, almost quarter mile, so.
Yeah. Says seventeen hundred, or 714,000 square feet, 18 acres, that's Lot 10.
The eastern, eastern property line is around there.
Oh, sure.
Quarter mile in length.
Yeah.
Cut. Somewhat limited, but for rail, but still a potential for what I call a three-to-five-car business.
Yep.
Cut.
And we did get, uh, we have license agreements in place for, uh, crossings for higher to general answer, so.
With or without state funding?
Uh, crossings are without, all of the rest of the rail will be there.
Yep. All right. Very good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plan, Encore Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a couple of other notes on, on Encore Park. We are working with the developer on, on MOU, memorandum of understanding. Uh, they're, they're requesting TIP, so we are working on that with them, and they are evaluating the feasibility of the LIF grants currently.
What is the LIF grant? I've heard that a couple of times, and I think I may have asked, but.
I, I've drawn a blank on the.
Global Infrastructure Improvement Plan. And it is a, it's completely a state, uh, G O E, uh.
Okay, so G O D.
And it's, it's part of the job base, so it's, uh, um, yeah, I, you know, I think I'll be, right, and I think we're kind of creating a way from them at this point, maybe the burdens, uh, that it imposes on the city, and, and, uh.
Is that a, a 50/50 or some other match deal or not?
Uh, it's not that, it's not a match, it's the administrative burden, and, uh, you know, kind of just the, you know, you're going to deploy public funds and build projects, so, so, with the side where you're prepared with it, and there's also the side where you want, you want them to be able to work the stuff that they're going for, and there's just way too much, way too much value for the administration on that, then.
Yeah. So it's especially a small grant like this.
Yeah, and that, that, it may be entirely, you know, myself. So we have a rule that I'll entirely, uh, make out of.
Anything else, sir, Brian?
Thank you, too, for always being at all these meetings. Appreciate them.
Happy to be here.
Okay, uh, Encore Park Annexation Resolution 1621 is, is there in front of you?
Yep, we've, I added a, a little bit of language to the second whereas, the last, the last line, um, against the legal description, and then it says half consented to and petition for the property to be annexed to the city of Brandon.
Should we have a vote on the preliminary plan?
Not yet. Not until I think about it.
Yeah, we still got to vote, I think, though.
We have a vote on the preliminary plan.
Oh, we did not, I thought we had. We have a motion and a second to approve the Encore Park preliminary plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now the annexation.
Yep, as I said, the, I added some language to the resolution that's not in your packet, just says half consented to and petition for the property to be annexed into the city of Brandon.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the annexation. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, budget work session for next Monday is?
Yep, we've got two of them scheduled, the 23rd and the 30th.
Kill them.
Well, the 30th should be fairly short.
I thought it was going to be quicker than.
That's always the goal.
Okay, we'll plan on those. I don't think we need, uh, number five, off-sale liquor license fees and issuance.
Well, I'm kind of still looking at a couple of the legal issues, so I think Brian and Christina, you're good deferring it for a little bit longer?
That's, that's fine. We just, with the census coming out, we know that we're going to pick up one off-sale license. We would like to take a look at those license fees we've got proposed in here, either lotteries or a bid system, or just a per capita, but change it to more than the 500 bucks that we're charging now. Um, I think what we'll probably end up doing, since the number will come out fairly soon, probably at the next meeting, since we don't have an ordinance ready to go yet, we'll probably put a moratorium on, on off-sale licenses, similar to what we did with on-sale licenses at the last census, so that we can get our stuff together beforehand.
So I'm sorry, I haven't really had a chance to review this much, but, um. We are, they say we have eight, we have potential, but I'm just saying two more.
But we.
Golf course and the new one.
Yep, one we currently control, which is ours, at the golf course, and then we'll pick up one new one.
Okay, so then it's a matter of how we set those fees for those two.
Correct, correct.
Currently, it's 500 bucks.
Okay.
For the app, and then 500 on the renewal.
Yep.
Correct.
The renewal, we can't change, that's set by South Dakota codified law.
Okay.
So it'd be the original or initial application fee.
But the license, initial license, we can change.
Correct.
My personal opinion is 500 is a little low, but.
Yeah, and license fees, there's a whole bunch of things you can chart, you can take into consideration for license fees and, and the application fees. You just have to keep in mind, it's not supposed to be a revenue generator. That's not a license fee is, because then it becomes a taxation issue. So, um, we looked at this, uh, I don't know, it's like eight years ago, and I can send something around about what factors you consider in setting a license fee. Um, it's really how much, you, you look into how much work it is to do the, the background checks, and going in and, and regulating the business, and doing safety checks, and all of those things. So it's a bunch of factors you take into consideration. You just can't say it's to be a revenue generator, because that's not the process of a license fee for a municipality.
Is there a problem with doing a lottery system if we only have a limited number?
What I'm thinking of, what, what I'm proposing is, you guys set a, a maximum, like, our license fee is going to be $5,000, and let's see if anybody will pay, and we're going to take the highest bidder up to 5,000. But we think it's, and, and whatever the number is, I'm just throwing 5,000 out there, I mean, maybe 1,000, whatever the case may be, but you need to take into consideration what those factors are for setting a license fee, and potentially go in and say, well, we think it's going to, you, what we think is reasonable, taking into consideration all these factors, is whatever, $4,000. And then you could do a sealed bid to see if anybody, you know, you could take the one that's going to be the highest up to that $4,000. But I think if you just leave it to the open market, then you're not taking into consideration the factors of what you're supposed to be looking at in setting a license fee. And that's what I think doing a public bid does, where you are trying to have a minimum and not a maximum, because you're.
Rapid City?
Rapid, for Rapid City.
Um, I'm in discussions. I, all I can say is, I've researched this issue before, you know, eight years ago, and I know what the case law says out there about what you're supposed to take into consideration in setting the amount. And I don't, like, I can't speak to what Rapid City is doing, so that's why I'm asking, let's not set this today. But I read the cases, and I went back today, and I went, they're, they haven't changed since when I looked at them eight years ago?
The other thing I'd like to possibly include in any revision is some type of evalu- of evaluation by the city as to potential sales tax revenue for us. If you give company A, who has very limited potential for sales in liquor versus company B, and you get them at the same time, I think, I think that should be part of the evaluation of the city, as to what's in the best interest.
Right, so, but that's two different issues.
Yep.
One is the license fee, and one is, do we approve you for a license? And when we're going to evaluate whether we want this, I mean, and we looked at it eight years ago, do we want a liquor license for a, um, gas station where we didn't think that maybe, we were wanting an Applebee's? You know, that's where we're going to revenue, or get the money from, and, and what, what is going to be the operating and, and building our city up for things? And, and so that's a very fair thing to look at in terms of, do we want to approve you? But a license fee is different than.
Right.
Uh, approval of a business.
You make a good point, too. I mean, it'd be nice to know who we're giving.
So if we're going to, if we're going to take a look at the order.
Should probably take a look at, sure, the whole thing.
All right. So is, is it feasible to, um, in a sealed bid, to put a minimum, a dollar amount?
Sure.
Like, for instance, just, as you, you use five grand as enough?
Well, you can't think of, we, we do, we do that for when we have stuff we want to get rid of to sell. Our minimum is $500. So I, I think you can do that, but I, I think when you're setting a license fee, you have to look at the factors for what you can set a fee for. It's different of, we're selling a, a used, or one of our police cars we want to get rid of, and our minimum is going to be $1,000. That's different than a license fee, because a license fee is supposed to be used to help process and regulate and, and deal with that business for the next year, as opposed to, here's a truck.
So let me ask you, Lisa, when you studied this eight years ago, did you feel $500 was not a revenue generator, and you felt like that's why we should keep the fee at that?
We looked at for the full liquor license, and we were setting our full liquor license, and somebody can remind me if it was $150,000, and we were looking at, should that be 150,000, or should we move it to 50,000? And so when we were trying to set that fee, we were looking at what were the factors we should be using to sell our liquor license that we had available? Because I think we had two or three, and nobody was buying them, because they were $150,000.
Yeah.
So is, is $500, um, the, the amount? I, I think you guys can, can set that higher for what you have to do as it goes down in that year.
Yeah, I mean, you, you want to sell them, because you're going to make your money, and once they have the license and are generating the income based on their retail sales, so I don't think you want it too high, but I think 500 might be, because we already know the renewal is 500. But, all right, I think we, well, so, at this point, Brian, is there anything further to do?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, streets. We have a street report, and we have a Rushmore Project change order, number three.
Yep, three minor changes to the, what, or the lift station in the Rushmore Project. Total amount is $2,950.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Russian, Rushmore Project pay application.
Yep, in the amount of $549,164.44.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, Rushmore Project pay application. Any further discussion?
I believe the first lift is down.
It is.
On Rushmore, yep.
It is, yeah, I saw it. Looks nice.
Welcome.
Yep. Uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Where are we coming in on, on budget-wise, you know, anybody know? On the project, on the Rushmore project? Um, pretty decent. We can take a, we can take a look at it. Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking ahead to the next meeting, so. Yeah, the, uh, you know, we're.
Compared to what, I guess? Because the bids came in really good, so it was under what we projected, so why are you compared, I mean?
Yeah, ri- and then we had a deduct on a change order, so. Okay, yeah, so, never mind, people, we're, we're coming in good, though. Yeah.
Uh, water and sewer, we have a utility bill printing proposal.
Uh, this is a proposal from qualified pre-sort to move our utility outsourcing to them, and they're out of Sioux Falls. Um, they are lower on processing and materials and postage, um, and then a couple of benefits would just be be mailed and postparked out of the Sioux Falls Post Office instead of the Aberdeen one, so it should speed up delivery time to residents.
But you did try really hard to work with our local press.
I did look, try really hard to work with a local business, and they were unable to help us, accommodate us, because of just software and technology to do the mass mailing that we need.
So we did, we did try to do it local.
We did.
So I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the printing proposal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a wage adjustment for Donovan Carpenter.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Westside trunk sanitary sewer extension cost estimate.
We asked DGR to get us a cost estimate for that westside trunk. Um, it's, it's still very preliminary, they aren't, I mean, they're, I think they're about 60% done with plan, so it's, you know, they've got a 20% contingency in there, but the cost estimate came in at 3.9 million. Uh, when we were talking during the CIP process, we were thinking it was going to be about 1.2.
How much?
1.2.
1.5.
So a significant increase, talking with DGR late last week. Uh, the biggest factor is, um, plastic pricing. The, uh, the resin prices have increased three times in the last 12 months, and they've been significant price increases each time. In fact, DGR said the contractors won't give us the price for pipe anymore, they will give us the price for resin. Um, the, the big thing that stood out to me, if you look at 18 to 24-inch PVC, SDR 26 sanitary sewer pipe, $150 a foot.
Next.
I mean, that's typically somewhere between 75 and 100, maybe. So. What's driving the increase in plastic pellets? Good question. Um, you know, oil prices.
Oil prices.
Have, are starting to drop, so that's, it, it went up. It's a byproduct of the refinery. Yep, I think, uh, there's still a, a huge lag with COVID. In manufacturing. Everybody, that's an excuse more than a reason, but.
Can we get some federal money for this, through that, the cares or secures or whatever?
We've got, and, and.
We've been talking about that. It's, it's hard to use federal money for this project, and, and there's a few reasons for that. This is for development, so when you do these projects for development, you essentially do a cost recovery for the land that it, it, uh, serves. So then those acres would pay for this eventually. So whenever they start plating land, or they start building on that, they're going to pay for this. You don't really want to use the federal funds for it, because then if you use federal funds for it, or any kind of funding for it, you should decrease that cost recovery. I don't believe you should decrease that for development. I don't believe you should decrease that for development. When you're getting federal funds, you really should use that money to decre- decrease for a project that we're going to do that is going to decrease the surcharge to your entire residents. Can you use it somehow to say that you're going to use the federal funds to cash flow until you get the pro, use it for a project that you're going to use it for? Possibly, um, but I would not earmark it for this.
It was.
I think this is a really important project though, to open us up.
Yep, it was pretty easy to take a look at the ARP funding when we believed it was, you know, well below what we were looking at for ARP funding. Since it's significant more, we are talking staff, we're talking with some other options. And right now we, we don't have those fully developed since we just got this, I think, late Thursday, Friday. So we'll take a look. We just wanted to get out in front of you so that everybody knows kind of where we're at and, and what we're going to be looking at for options.
So what other options are there or and or, um, what other? Well, first of all, what, what specific federal grant would you be looking at?
We, we kind of slated the ARP funding, the COVID relief, the latest round.
Right.
Um, you know, we're anticipating one point eight million from the feds over the next two years, which would have slotted really nice when this was, you know, one point two million.
Yeah.
So as Christina mentioned, in the next couple of years, we're, we're going to be looking at extending that New Forest Main to Sioux Falls. So that one is going to be spread out against everybody in the city and it benefits everybody in the city. So would it be more prudent to use the ARP funds for that? To potentially reduce the surcharge per account in the city versus this or these, and, and I think we're going to run into the same thing with the east side sewer. This one's just coming along faster. So we're also working through the same time on plating fees and development fees to be charged and trying to sort out our current situation where we've got multiple different types of fees that we charge and get a standardized fee.
But essentially, what do you do? You bond for it? The city up pays those yearly annual payments and you wait until it gets developed. And the money comes in slowly.
Yeah, so in this instance, you look at it, um, fairly fast, you'd be looking at Encore, Encore Park. Other than that, everything else is going to be speculation. So I think Encore Park is a hundred eight.
Ninety acres.
Ninety acres out of
Five hundred.
Five hundred twenty. So we would upfront the three point nine and then wait over time for the rest of the property to be, be developed.
If we don't have it opened up, they're not going to come. So we've got to get it opened up.
So when you started talking about industrial development and recovery on sewer, it starts to get very expensive, doesn't it? Because they don't typically are big sewer users.
Well, it all depends on the industry. I mean, there's some industries that are huge sewer users. You know, in another community I was at, there was a canning company that went through six million gallons of water a day.
But typically this is easier to spread out over a housing development.
It, uh, well, I mean, the cost per acre would be the same. It'd just be a, a matter of, it's going to be spread out more over more users or more property owners.
So, so. We're just going to look at some other options. This is just information for us.
Yeah, this is just information so that, you know, when the time comes, you're all sitting down when we open the bid.
What about other grants?
We can take a look at some grants. Um, we'll certainly, I mean, we've been in conversations with Leslie over at CCOG on the other ones. So we'll pick her brain and see if there's anything.
Will we use east and west side, combine them into a grant?
Um.
But I mean, if you're going to ask for a federal grant, you want to get up as high as you can really.
Potentially, although we haven't had any indication from the developers on the east side as far as timing.
Okay. Well, again, to Barb's point, we're going to have to do it if we're going to expect that plan to develop.
Hey, east side too.
Oh, yeah.
There's right behind.
This one's running a little hard.
This one's faster.
Right now.
So just information for now, we'll, we'll have some more, uh, a clearer picture maybe or some clearer alternatives at a later date.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, any?
I need five minutes in executive session.
Okay. Any other new business that?
I'll just speak on the, the sales tax. Uh, we are seeing a really good sales tax, which, um, this year it is positive. I will caution as I'm looking year to year, um, a lot of the numbers that I'm seeing are more is related to construction. And another number that I'm seeing from last year versus this year is eating establishments because last year during May, June, July was way down and they're way up this year. Same thing with hotels and motels. They were way down last year. They're way up this year. So there's a lot of factors that are playing in the sales tax number. Um, I also did see a large, um, category that was over one point million over, one point two million dollars over last year. I did email the state because I was a little concerned on that. Um, they did say that it most likely had to do with machinery. So one of our large industrial companies could have bought a lot of machinery. So it's, it's a one-time, um, revenue stream. So I'd be cautious on it. It is great news, but I do want to be cautious.
Did Marvin do a, uh, equipment upgrade or expansion or anything like that?
We don't know.
Don't know. Midwest Rail or anything?
Midwest Rail's out of the city limits.
They're out.
Midwest is out of the city limits.
Well, they do look good. I mean, it's impressive numbers.
Look very, very good.
Hopefully.
Online?
Online is staying pretty consistent, about forty thousand, um, dollars. That's coming to us a month. So no big jumps there.
The golf course numbers look really good too.
Yes.
Really strong. So that's good to see. Okay.
One twenty-five, two, three, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for attending. I'll let Chris.